March 30, 2023. Let the record show that all members of the council are present and others in the audience. First of all, does anybody want to add to the discussion items?
I just want to add regarding the proposals for the landscaping.
Okay. And then I would just like to mention about the approval for the wall site.
I can add about the police car being transferred over to the fire.
Okay. Okay. Let's go ahead and forward. First of all, I think some of you have read this letter. Each year, Moore County Partner in Progress asks the local folks to contribute to their budget. We have declined to do that in the past.
Oh.
And they're asking for a thousand dollars.
Didn't they ask this last year too?
That's an economic development program.
We don't need it.
Does anybody want to?
What is, what is, what is it? I'm sorry, but...
It's supposed to enhance their efforts to bring people into the area.
We don't need it.
No.
Not necessarily our area, but to Moore County to bring people into, into Moore County.
More traffic.
Cause the economic growth.
Okay.
In the past, I know we didn't do it because we didn't see anything of value to Foxfire.
Right.
If anybody has anything they feel strongly about that we want to contribute this money?
Say no.
No.
We need the money.
I'll let them know that.
Thank you, but no thank you.
With all the other things going on, that's not what we needed. Next thing on the list was the Affordable Housing Initiative. Initiatives going on at the State House. Several of these bills, Senate Bill 317, House Bill 409, 474, House Bill 474. All of these programs are designed to reduce the burden on builders to build affordable homes. I think all of you have tried to read through these bills and it is complicated and sometimes almost contradicts itself. But it was, the main thing that it's going to do is require municipalities to give up all of their zoning capabilities, which is basically the bottom line. The bottom line to that is that. And that's on Senate Bill 317.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, I think we should talk to our representatives and tell them firstly, I'm opposed to all of it.
All of it. And on House Bill 409, they're saying that any, any property can now have an additional, an accessory dwelling home regardless of the size of the lot. They're talking about a five-foot setback, which is just cringe-worthy. But there are a lot of questions and I emailed all of you and I said the questions that I sent to the league for them to present to the, to the representatives. And on Tuesday, Janice and I are going up in the morning to meet with Senator McGinnis to go over the 317 bill and basically bring up those same questions to him. He is one of the co-sponsors, but not the primary sponsor.
He is.
So he should know some of these questions that we asked him. If you guys look at that list and have looked at the bills and there's anything you think that we should bring up, just email either Janice or I so we can put down on our list of things to beat them up. And then that's in the morning and then the afternoon, we're meeting with our representative Neil Jackson on House Bill 409, which in my mind has a greater impact on the village because it takes away any zoning capabilities at all. And people can be sticking eight hundred square foot houses five feet away from another house as we read this bill. I think that's gotta be wrong, but we need to ask that question.
Every house in all headed to Foxfire could have an accessory dwelling.
That's correct. Yeah, well, and again, they're, they're taking all the, all of the power away from the taxpayers. It's really, I think the taxpayers should be revolting over some of these things, to tell you the truth. And I, and I really think that, that our taxpayers need to pay close attention to these bills. And I, I would like Lisa to maybe put these bills on our website in an email to the...
That's probably not a bad idea.
That's a great idea.
What, what I'd like to do is after we come back on Tuesday, we do a little after-action report and post that on the website as well.
Right, along with all these bills.
We're just not sitting back. We are trying to take this fight to them.
And again, this is just not a Foxfire issue. It's not a Moore County issue. It is all of North Carolina.
Yeah, it's all of North Carolina.
The fabric of this state. And I do not understand, well, I understand why, because everyone is getting significant funds from the Home Builders Association. But I don't understand why the taxpayers are not up in arms over this stuff.
And I think by law, people don't know about it and won't know about it until...
Well, they need to know about it and people need to make noise and we really need to get, because they're going to act quickly on these things.
Or you're...
People need to be calling the offices. They need to be writing, but it's better if you even call because they do answer the phone.
They do answer the phone. Email, they respond to emails.
Yeah.
Well, Lisa should put that out on the website and headline caution, very important, read it.
Yeah, what, what we have to, careful which battles we want to fight on this because there's a lot of pressure on these representatives and senators on the affordable housing issue. A lot of political pressure, not only from the home builders, but from other agencies. And it says bipartisan support up through including the governor.
I do understand it. I do understand the need, but let the, let the communities figure out where they want to put these, where it fits, what communities it even fits into, because we don't have the infrastructure. We don't have the tax base to, to support these, you know...
Exactly. That's exactly our argument we're going to make on Tuesday.
You know, and there's no...
Sweet stuff at drainage fields.
Small, small towns like ours need to be exempted.
There, well, there, and there's no exemption for these written into any of these right now.
Any place, anywhere.
And as far as the workforce housing, they're calling it, well, we don't have that huge amount of jobs that could even, you know, be calling for these. And if you look at the primary sponsors of these bills, it's all from the Charlotte area, Winston-Salem, Raleigh. They're all, they're all surrounding large metropolitan areas. And maybe they have more of a need.
Yeah, and I think you could, you could just mildly say, well, if we build affordable housing here for people who work at the golf resort, who work at the restaurants. I mean, those are legitimate needs for those people. How they're, yeah, they're using a sledgehammer instead of a scalpel to try to fix the problem.
Right, and, and let town, and put, if you want to put quotas on it, saying you have to have X percent of this type of housing. Okay, but again, let a town determine where they could do it.
And I think that's, that's the argument we need to take that to them.
How do they violate the watershed?
Well, and that's one of our questions.
And, and how do you violate the building code?
Well...
The building codes are, they're saying that they have to meet the building codes.
Right.
They have to meet the building codes.
That's, they are what they're saying?
Yep.
That they have to be, they have to meet the building codes. So you can't use a storage shed as a, as a residence.
Tents or anything.
Right.
They have to be building codes.
Well, not yet, right.
It's got to meet the building code, but not the zoning, not the, not the zoning part.
And not the single family, right.
Yeah, they're taking away any, any issue other than, I think they're still keeping, at least on the Senate bill, our ability to, to control height.
That's a fire issue.
Yeah. And I don't know that, reading House Bill 409 multiple times, I don't see where they give any exception. So our representative, Jackson, is not a sponsor of the bill. So I don't know how much he's going to know about it, but we talked to them last week, Thursday or Friday.
No, was it, was it this week?
This, no, it was last week. It was last week.
Okay.
Last week, I think. Can't keep up. But anyway, so I'm hoping that his staff will brief him up so that he has some idea. And I contemplated setting the questions early on, but I'd rather catch them on our phones.
Right.
Because I think they know what's coming, because I know the league is going to provide these same questions, same issues.
How hard does the league really push?
Hmm?
How hard does the league really push?
They, pretty hard. They're pretty effective. They're a pretty strong lobby up there. Now, are they going to win on everything? No. I think the inevitability of some sort of a package will pass. I just think that that's going to happen. It's the political pressures are such that they can't just not do it anymore. You know, they've tried different things over the years, as you know, Mary and some of the folks here remember, to try to change, and those all died off because they were ill-thought.
Well, these are pretty ill-thought as well.
And these are, these are more than thought.
They, they need to put some, some, not restrictions, they need to put some exemptions for small communities.
Well, that's what we're, that's one of the questions we asked. How can we, you know, say two thousand people, five thousand people, we can't, we can't do this unless you give us billions of dollars, putting sewer systems and roads and...
Why should we even be an incorporated village if we have absolutely no control over anything anymore? It makes no sense that we should even be a village.
Those are the questions we're going to ask. I think you all saw those questions, so those will be what's up there. I think this is a real battle that we need to fight and we need to get as much community awareness as we can. Start talking to all of the reps in the state because the news coverage is all very positive about the affordable care, or not affordable care, but affordable housing. They're all very positive.
Right.
Very positive, but so there's no media pushback whatever on this, so. I did mention this a little bit to the pilot yesterday, but I don't think they're going to be a supporter of that.
I'm really surprised about that, especially with all the issues going on within Pinehurst itself, you know, with different use issues.
Yeah.
Have, have you reached out to any of the other mayors?
I tried to send an email to Mayor Priglin yesterday, or day before yesterday, and it bounced back, so I'll try to call him tomorrow and let him know we're going out there.
And do we know where the county commissioners stand on any of this?
Uh, I have not heard anything from the county at all. I think they're, they're, you know, we know the county wants development to be around cities. So that's going to be the county's focus, not necessarily what, what we need to focus on. Anybody else have any questions about these things? Again, read over. Get your coffee or whatever you need to try to get your way through this thing. And if you think of anything else...
And I would say if any residents...
And any residents that they know, spread the word.
If they, if they read any of these bills, again, we could listen again. If, if they have any, you know, questions concerning these bills, concerning, basically losing single-family neighborhoods is what you're going to be losing. And, you know, if, if that's important to them, forward your questions, forward your questions to us, to Lisa, to the, to the, so that they can, so that we can ask additional questions.
Any other questions on that one? Okay, well, that's a big issue and it's going to be a fight. It'll probably last a long time. Okay, uh, next thing on our agenda is the RA5 rezoning hearing date. We had to change that date yet again because Lisa went to a Cook's seminar last week and found out that notification of zoning changes in the ETJs require a thirty-day notice as opposed to a fourteen-day notice.
So when is the date now?
So we get that tentatively set up from May ninth.
Oh, okay.
Which will be a packed day. Table six point one.
Yeah.
Conditional zoning.
Yeah.
Uh, definitions, which I think is the one definition is what we're dealing with.
And that's at our meeting we started?
Sorry?
That's at our council meeting?
Yeah, this will be an open hearing.
Okay.
This will be the open hearing.
So the April eleventh is not...
The April eleventh will be for the...
RF two hundred.
RF two hundred and the subdivision changing the approval level for subdivisions from the P and Z.
To the council.
So that should be, I think, fairly simplistic. Yeah, I think that's pretty simplistic. That will be on the eleventh. The big hitter will be on May ninth. And there's going to be a lot to cover because the last thing will be on there is RA5. And we, it's just a longer timeframe to do all this stuff now. But that's, that's the thing that's going on that's going to take your time. Uh, okay, any questions about the, about the meeting meetings for the open hearings? Hope we don't have to change them again.
Yeah, it's been six months.
Yeah, no, it's terrible. Can't get this together. Okay, swimming pool, what you got, counsel?
Doing my calendar here. Okay, no worries. Uh, swimming pool, where was I? Uh, blah, blah, blah. All right, so I know I wanted to finalize this today, but I don't think we're going to be able to do that. Lisa and I and Janice and I have been talking about, we're definitely going to go with season passes. What I'd like everybody to do is kind of think about pricing. We figure there will be approximately ninety-nine days that the pool can be in use for the season. So what we're throwing, what we're contemplating right now is pricing for adults sixteen and up and pricing for children under sixteen down to age five.
Okay.
And keep in mind that last year we were charging residents two dollars per visit every time they used the pool. So, you know, if you want to average, you know, we, we're thinking about a total price for a family. Let's say four hundred dollars, that includes children, but then you have the, the family that has one child paying four hundred dollars. And then you have another family that's got five children paying four hundred dollars. If I'm the one child, you know, family with the one child, I'm a little upset that I'm paying four hundred for one child. So we kind of thought that it would probably be better to charge a single price. So there could be a price for, like I said, sixteen and up for the adults and a price fifteen down to five for a child.
Okay, that, okay, what, okay, all right.
Okay.
Got it?
Figuring ninety-nine days of use.
Mm-hmm.
Now, there may, and, and I'm not going to take in rain dates or anything like that. Um, if it rains, it rains. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So I, I'd really like to get some feedback from everybody. I, I have some ideas. I'm not going to let, I'm not going to share them with you right now because I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say. And, and like, like us all to be in agreement with it.
Are we talking a season pass now?
Yes.
And, okay, so we're talking a season pass, and what about daily pass?
There will be daily passes available for non-residents. There will also be daily passes, punch cards or whatever, daily pass for if you have a visitor that day. Um, we're going to give it a try and see if they can collect money at the pool.
Okay.
So these punch cards, passes, whatever we're going to call them, would be numbered. So if they, we go from zero to ten and we're charging two dollars apiece for them, we should have twenty dollars or forty dollars or whatever the number is, we should be able to balance it.
And the, the, the pool people are okay with doing that?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the other thing, so, go ahead, yes, yes.
So if we have them collecting at the pool...
Oh, not for the season passes?
No, 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 I mean for the daily pass, right? There's no reason for anything, any piece of paper, right? Because they just charge as they walk in the door.
Well, I'd like, what they'll do, what USA Pool Management will do, they'll track.
Yeah, account for it. Yeah, okay.
Now, this is the part that you may not want to do, but we're going to do it. Because there's going to be a pretty good influx of people wanting to get a season pass and we would like to laminate them. This is an old season pass that I got, Andy Moody gave it to me to use. We want them laminated and I want every person in the family to have one. So to take the burden off of our staff, set up one of us or two of us, pick a day, pick some hours in, before we open the pool and have, tell people when we're going to be open. This is when you can come and get your pass, blah, blah, blah. So if we could all volunteer to do that, yeah, I'm not talking the whole day.
And we could all come in and just make up a bunch of passes.
Yeah.
Yeah, close them.
Okay, good. And we can schedule that as we move along.
Do we have a lamination machine?
Yes, we do.
Very good.
Yeah.
So is there, I'm assuming the restriction is that they must be a resident of Foxfire Village?
To get a season pass, yes. Yes, we are not going to give out season passes for non-residents.
And is there going to be, what, what are we looking for in terms of what should they bring that says on the, the water bill?
Water bill, driver's license, whatever, anything with their address.
Sure, sure.
Got you, got you.
Yeah.
Okay, I like that. I like the idea.
And, and everyone, every child five and up would have a pass. Um, the other thing we're, we're discussing, and I, we can do this, I talked to the management company. We, in our contract with them, every year we've had the pool open for six hours a day. We are allowed in our contract pricing, six hours is what they quoted us. Now, anything over, like if we wanted to keep the pool open an additional hour, we would have to pay them X amount, I think, don't quote me, I think it was twenty-nine dollars an hour per person that's there. So we can work within our six-hour period. And what I'm thinking is, is that for the month of June, that we would be open the hours that we always work, eleven to five. July, we can shift it to where it's hotter, it's longer days, one to seven. And August, we can go twelve to six. And we can shift this as we go through the season. They just have to have a seven-day notice.
So we're stuck, I'm not stuck, wrong word, wrong word. We can only open it for six hours?
A day, in our contract.
In our contract.
And it's, they have two people there, correct? So it's really, it is, it's twenty-nine dollars an hour, but it's really sixty dollars. I mean, yeah, sixty dollars. Yeah, I can give you the exact, for every hour, because they have two, two people there. Yeah.
How much of a change is six hours that they're, that they're going to be open versus what did we do last year?
It was twenty, we did six hours.
Oh, it was six hours?
Yes.
Okay, got you.
That's why we did... No change in the hours.
Okay.
But they based their prop, their pricing on the fact that we were only open six hours a day.
Yeah, got you. I thought, whether you were explaining it, I thought maybe there was a change from last year.
No, 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 no. What we want to change is keeping it open later during the summer.
There is, there is a top end to that, and I don't remember what it is, how late we can be.
Well, dusk, dusk.
Dusk, okay. I think what we might want to do, and as the season starts, people come in, ask them the question, do you think we'd be better shifting it back or you like these hours? We shift it back to people at work, they can come in and they can jump in the pool for an hour or two.
What they're also going to do is USA Management will track hourly how many people are in the pool.
That's a good idea, yeah.
So if we're looking at, let's say we're keeping it open until seven, opening at one, closing at seven, but there's two people in the pool from six to seven, well, then let's push it back to twelve to six. Why keep it open for an hour for two people? Like I said, we can, we can fix it as we go along.
So that people don't show up to the pool as closed, well, it was open last week. I think that's got to be a communication.
And, but they have to have seven days' notice.
Yeah, I understand.
So we can always put it on the website, the town choir, the below field.
We get the word out, we're going to change it.
Okay?
Okay.
So, but I do want people to kind of put together for me what your ideas are in terms of pricing. I'll do the day pass pricing. We can talk about that when we come up.
Chad, you charged two dollars an adult last year?
Yes.
And how much for the kids sixteen?
A dollar.
One dollar.
But that was residents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, keep in mind, we're going to five and under, there won't be a charge.
Right.
So I, I really like input from everybody though. Okay? Anybody else have any questions?
Good. Give us some, we're going to do, we're going to come up with that next meeting, right?
I'd like, yeah, and I'd like to finalize that pricing next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so that's it. Anybody else? Okay, next.
Okay, Village Park.
Okay. All right, this is, this is something I can talk about, but I can't tell you where it's going. So what we have, and I'm going to pass this on.
On the tree.
Yeah, you should be. This is kind of fun. The North Moore County Convention and, no, Janice has one.
I have one already.
Moore County Convention and Visitors Bureau to promote tourism in the area has started a, has a statewide initiative called the Year of the Trail. Now, that's throughout the whole state. So what they did, and they, they contacted me months ago and asked if Foxfire Village would like to participate since we have trails, our trails. And their initiative is, and it's kind of cool. They're working with a company by the name of Starworks and they created these special glass-blown pine cones. And they're, and I'll pass it on, don't break it, okay? These will be, each village, wherever that is participating, that has trails, will be given pine cones throughout the summer. We are asked to hide them in somewhere in the trail. Now, the gal that is working with the Convention and Business Bureau,
Don't drop her.
I met with her. She came here the other day and we went through the trail and we've already picked out a spot that it's going to go.
How many are they going to give us?
It depends. It, it can vary. So this is our first one.
If we got four trails, it'd be kind of neat to have...
No, we're not going to get, no, we're not going to get four at a time.
Okay.
If anything, we may get two.
Okay.
Um, so I, I've already picked out a spot. She thought it was a good idea. And we can, she's spoken with, I think she did, the owner of the general store. And they can, and what they're also trying to do is promote business for your businesses in your area. And there'll be clues given up there so they can stop in. Can I get the clues for the park trail? And whoever finds this pine cone, did you see the code, the barcode?
Well, the QR code?
Yeah, so they call, they take a picture of it and they'll call and there'll be directions as to what to do next. They get to keep this. And then they're, there's a drawing at the end of the year, at the end of the season, and the grand prize, so.
And what's the grand prize?
I don't know.
Oh.
But I can't tell any of you where I'm going to hide it.
That's fine. That's good. That's fine. That's fine.
Fine, so...
I love trails.
Well, I would think that if a council member found it, that it wouldn't count.
No. Well, and, you know, I, I think you guys could participate as long as I don't tell you where it is. And I will...
And when is it going to be?
I am going to hide it tomorrow, starting March thirty-first.
Which trail? Which side of the route?
One of them. And it, it will not, I'm not going to say the answer. So anyway, I will hide it tomorrow.
How are you going to get the word out?
And I'm going to ask Lisa to post something on the website. And it'll be on one of the trails. And I think it's perfect timing for us because we have the Easter egg hunt on April first. And really what they're trying to do is get people to, to... And really, what they're trying to do is get people to, um,
You don't walk.
Walk your trails.
Yeah, fine.
There could be a bad thing about that, maybe not so good. We don't have to participate if we don't want to after the first one, but we'll see how it plays out.
Let me ask an insurance question, we covered somebody from high block.
Well, we have liability, we have liability for the park, so yes.
That's cool, alright.
And, and these will not, they're, like, there's a requirement, it cannot be placed, uh, believe me, you're not gonna be climbing a tree to find it. It can't be placed more than two feet off the trail. No more than three feet high on a tree. And, um, and so it, it's gonna be, you'll be able to see it.
I would think so.
Mary's going, can I smell it first?
And, and when, when, when will the I mean, if ten people show up and the first guy finds it. Is it, they're a
We fire the hider.
No, you're, it'll be a little harder than that to find.
Well, I'm just saying, if, if they find it the first day.
Then it's in, that's it.
Then how does everybody know that we?
They have, and they, they have to notify us.
I know, they have to notify, because we have to tell people from wherever, walking through the trails, saying, well, I don't see them anywhere.
It's out there.
Not being able to find it. Cause it was found the first day.
Keep going. Now, so.
Well, they're great trails, so I'm glad that, I think this is gonna be fun.
Alright, good. That's all I have.
No, you have one more thing.
Oh, what was it?
The contract.
Jeez Louise, what was it?
Well, if you don't want to record the budget.
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know, five companies did request to bid. Three actually bid. I have to leave it open, I gave them until tomorrow to get their bids in. So as of, our next council meeting, I'll be able to tell you, we're gonna award the bid to.
Okay. And then the last thing I wanted to add before we get into the budget was, we did get a letter from the state approving a preliminary drilling of the website. And the Sackman rep.
Well site, well site.
Cool.
The well site, yeah. We're, we're legit so far.
So far, it's okay. If we just get a driller out there.
I get somebody to come out and drill it, that's right. And then, I have not, I did proper the offer to Sackman's rep. And I have not heard anything back from them yet.
When did you make that offer?
When?
When?
Uh, two days ago.
Okay.
Okay, so, alright. Now, we're off to the fun part.
I got one, one thing about it.
Oh, sorry.
Our new police car is in, is equipped, is on the road. All it has to be done is put the lettering on the car, but they're using it. And therefore, the Chevrolet Tahoe has been transferred over to the water department, which means they're responsible, gas, oil, repairs, insurance, et cetera, et cetera. We're off the hook. And you get ten miles to go, by the way.
Sell it and buy a Honda.
You know, I saw the new car last night, going down the road.
Pretty classy?
Well, I saw it when they were putting on the lights and stuff.
They had fancy blue lights on the front and back, so even when they're not flashing the lights, you can tell it's a police car.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
It'd be pretty cool. So you see cruisers here, and you don't have to worry about who's in the dark car driving around.
And reporting them to the police.
Okay, very good, thank you, Tom. Uh, I guess we're off to the budget now.
Oh, yes.
Hannah, it's all yours.
Infamous budget. Well, what I did, and I just, I started putting numbers down on paper, because that's the only way to start. So, that's what I did. So if we wanna go to the administration budget, let's do that one first. Couple of things that we know for sure is, is that we have administration salaries that we're probably gonna have to deal with increases on. And separately, I've got two, I gave you two sheets, salary sheets. Just so you know, one is a four percent increase, and one is a five percent increase, just to throw some numbers out. I'm not saying we're giving that, doing that.
Have a baseline.
That it's gonna be across the board, no matter what it is. So just so we, we have that, so we know what that is.
It's a baseline, that's fine.
Now, the other thing we need to know, that we know is going up. If we look at like line item on the first page, account number four-one-three-zero-one-eight-two, which is retirement expense. That is going up basically point seven-five basis points.
Cause that was dictated.
Right, right. So that's gonna go up no matter what. And what I did is, I went through this line by line and making notes, okay? So for some of the small items, I just left them where they were. But administrative salaries, we're either gonna do, you know, we're gonna look at a four percent or a five, five percent increase, whatever. We know social security's gonna be adjusted. And Medicare, workers' comp, all that's gonna be, it's all going up, no matter what. Now, we have health insurance, we don't know what that is right now.
Left ear went down, right?
Yes, you can tell it's probably gonna go up.
Yeah, probably.
So going on to page two, and these are our numbers again, we're gonna fill these in as we go and as we, as we get more information. The big change of, well, legal fees. We currently have twenty-five thousand dollars in there, I, I suggest we leave it in there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Going down the columns. The only thing that I, that, well, the Muni code, we're changing the way we're doing the Muni code, so I put the forty-seven hundred dollars in there, because that's what we think it's gonna cost. Office supplies, I kinda reduced that a little, only because we didn't spend anywhere near what we said we were gonna do. So I, I reduced that to three thousand dollars instead of, you know, the four. What, what, the asterisks I have here are things that I really think we need to look into. When I'm looking at our expenses, it looks like our internet, our webpage and our internet service expenses are really high. It seems like they're really high, and I really wanna get to the bottom of that.
I asked that question of Sharon, and she indicated that we have the contract with GoDaddy, and this is the year that we had to pay the extra money for that contract, cause they want our website.
Yeah, and I, I mean, and everybody does that kinda stuff, and I'm just wondering, you know, is that the best choice? Should we be looking at it, just because it's what we always done, have done?
Great question.
Do we need to continue? I'm gonna at least ask the questions.
Great question, I think we, certainly for the internet service, we should look.
The printing, I went up, I, I just, I don't know what is involved in that, but we spent more than we, we budgeted, so I'm just setting that at eight hundred. I, you know, I don't know if that's
I think the printing, probably some of the leather heads and signs.
No, the water bill should be under the water.
No, that's the same thing, yeah.
Right.
They think they're like leather heads and printing that we do, maybe for the signs, like for the open hearings.
Right.
All that stuff's gotta be printed.
Going on to the next page, we have administrative salaries. So that was budgeted for administration, basically two-hundred-and-five thousand. We're gonna look at either a four or five percent, we're gonna plug in that increase there.
Where are we at, sorry?
Yeah, I jumped in.
Third page.
Next page over.
Third page.
Oh, third page.
Okay.
I know I am on third page.
It's like the third line item?
No, it's now, copy your service.
Well, it's probably
Oh, what did it, mess up my, um?
Yeah, it don't happen.
Yeah, go to the next page, but under what, public safety?
I'm sorry, I
No, that's not directly to you.
I skipped a page, I'm sorry. Advertising is the next one. I don't know what's in advertising, but if that has, if it has something to do with public notices, maybe job openings. We were at two thousand this year, I think we should leave it at two thousand, cause we may have some of those same needs. The other ones are, and the copier lease, I believe, is locked in. So it's, it's, we're looking at less than two thousand dollars, so I reduced that to two thousand.
Analyze, yeah.
The rest of them, we either don't have the contract, we don't have insurance quotes yet, so we don't know what those are. Maintenance, I'm assuming we're talking about building maintenance.
It's building maintenance, yeah.
And I don't think that's something we should neglect, and I think we should, we should just keep, you know, budgeting that. And I'm gonna continue to do that.
Pretty sure this also includes the park restrooms.
No, I think they have their own, I think they have their own, maybe what?
Park restrooms.
Yeah, that, we have our own for the park restrooms.
Do you? Okay. Cause I didn't know whether we combined those.
No, so, and, and again, once I get these numbers plugged in, unless you guys have other feedback, I wanted to put my opinions down, and then I'm gonna give this to Sharon and have her work on the, you know, the budget numbers. But if, if, if you guys have other feelings about the numbers I plugged in, let me know. So once we get these numbers plugged in, we can, you know, see what our real numbers are going to be.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Moving on to the next one, which is public safety. I put comments in, but that's not reflective of anything down the information that you have. So let's go through that. Miscellaneous is what it is, salaries are gonna be whatever they're gonna be, what we choose, so we're, we're gonna figure that out. And again, their retirement is going up as well, and theirs is going up one percent versus the three-quarters of a percent. So the, the law enforcement officers have a different ratio for their retirement. Computer services, it looks like we didn't budget anything, but we spent money on it, so I did budget.
I got two fifty in there.
I put two hundred in there, so.
Okay, I got two fifty in there. I went over there with the chief on this stuff.
What, what is that? Do you, do you know exactly what is in the computer services, is that?
Well, they have a problem, somebody comes out and
Oh, okay, so it's basically maintenance, alright.
Yeah.
Uniform replacement, I kept that the way it was.
I went, two thousand was okay with the chief on that.
Okay, good, great. Gas and oil, I plugged in fifteen, but
Seventeen.
Okay. Tires, I left the same.
Two thousand.
Travel, I put at five hundred.
That's what I got, five hundred.
Utilities, I left.
Two thousand.
Okay. Telephone, I left.
Forty-two.
Really?
Yeah.
Even though it was forty-four?
Yeah, no, it's forty, well, it's forty-five, and it's forty-two, because I figured out it's eight months, and it's come up, forty-two should cover it.
Okay.
You should.
Well, we did change the cell phone provider too, right? And that, that cut it, right. Postage, I left it.
Fifty bucks.
Vehicle maintenance, I put it five thousand.
No, that's not right.
Okay.
Uh, vehicle maintenance, we show we spent
Sixty-one, I'm sorry, forty-one.
But the reason that it shows that high is that we had a, Officer Judd had that accident with the car.
One-time accident.
And it cost us two thousand dollars.
Okay.
But we got paid for the insurance coverage, you take that two thousand off.
So what do we wanna put in here?
Three thousand, three thousand.
Three?
Three, yeah.
So to five? Yeah. Okay, everything else I left the same here.
Let's see, uh, office supplies, yeah, that's fine.
Police supplies, is that like ammo?
No, I need two thousand, that, he said that's two thousand, it's fine.
Okay. Professional services?
Public relations, two hundred dollars, I got.
Okay.
Professional services, I plugged in forty-five instead of four, I don't know if we're gonna need it or not.
That's basically the background checks, right?
Yeah. And we don't, we're not, shouldn't have to have anybody, as long as we can keep our fours, we shouldn't have to use that. So we'd probably leave it at about four. We spent thirty-six, forty-six so far.
Yeah, but we hired
Shouldn't be anymore.
Yeah, so we'd probably get about four in that.
Okay. Advertising, um
Hundred bucks.
Hundred?
Yeah.
Police pack, contract, we're gonna leave that, it looks like that's right along the same. Again, there's the internet service, again, of those expenses, it just seems high, too.
Yeah, it does, very high. We gotta check out that.
I think we need, we need to look at something like Spectrum or something like that. We did check to see if we'd get the T-Mobile in here, but they can't service us yet.
Not yet.
And it just added us, yeah.
Um, vehicle insurance, well, we're waiting for those quotes, so, as well as
Yeah.
Dues and subscriptions are at five.
Three hundred, it's at five.
Non-capitalized assets. I guess we're just gonna leave that, and we don't expect any capitalized expenses, do we? Okay. Now, the vehicle purchase, what I did hear is, is that's gonna be zero for next year, but I, I should've crossed this off. I do think we should be reserving thirty, putting thirty grand in reserves.
I put twenty down.
How much do we have to maintain the vehicle reserve now?
Right now, we have
Seventy-five thousand reserve, right?
Um, hold on. Right now, we have seventy-five in reserve, and I wanted to put thirty in there. Thirty additional in there, because we won't be buying a car this year, but I thought next, or the next fiscal year, there was possibly two vehicles we might be
No, just one.
Are we sure about that?
That's true.
Okay. So we could do twenty then?
Yeah.
Alright, well, I'll change that to twenty instead of thirty. So we're gonna, that's gonna be zero. The phone hazard, phone hazard, okay, we have, oh, and the K-nine will be zero.
No, you want five hundred in case, in case you, down the road a year or two, somebody decides they wanna take a dog, or one of the people we have now wants to take a dog, so we have to go turn around and buy a dog back, so like, we should keep that.
I think that's something we, we as a builder need to talk about, not
Right, what I, what I think, what I think we should do is, if that occurs, we can always take money out of our capital reserves.
Take it off.
Yeah. Building maintenance, do we wanna keep that? I don't see, I don't think we should ever let the buildings be not-maintenance.
No, we got everything taken care of on that building up there. We got two pieces of glass that need to be changed, but we can put five hundred dollars and get that done.
Well, let's leave it where it is.
Leave it at thousand, because you don't, a couple pieces of glasses.
Yeah, you never know.
We've been that way for twenty years, I think, so it's not like we have to do it.
Okay, so I can get these numbers updated.
Propane, better build reserve up propane for that generator, because sooner or later, the last item, propane.
Oh, yes.
I put three hundred dollars, because if that thing runs out, it's a two-hundred-and-fifty gallon tank.
Well, what, what is it at now? Cause they, what, what
Normally, it's five hundred, I should say.
What is it at?
It's like sixty percent.
Oh, okay.
Which is gonna last us two, three years probably, but it's gonna cost us twelve hundred dollars to fill up. So it should have
You take it from zero. So what do you put in there for propane?
Three hundred.
Three hundred?
In four years, we'll have twelve hundred if we fill the funnel.
Yeah.
Cause that generator starts every Wednesday and runs for fifteen minutes. That's just standard cycle, just to keep it maintained. I didn't know that.
Yeah. Onto the fire department.
Oh, fun.
I didn't, I just put an asterisk next to this, because number one, we don't know Well, let me get back to the, circle back on this with the valuation, because the, our valuation went up. Hold on, where's the piece of paper?
Forty-seven percent. Forty-seven percent.
Three hundred now.
Yeah, from three
I had a fifty-one percent, oh, fifty-one point nine-six percent increase.
Sharon gave me forty-seven.
That's not the, I don't think that's the correct calculation.
Alright.
I think it's fifty-two percent our real property went up. That's real property and vehicles, so.
What do you show as a total?
From our old?
New, new.
Two hundred and seventy-eight million.
Oh, for real property?
Right. Two hundred and seventy-eight million. So I had it up fifty-two percent, unless I'm using some wrong numbers from last year. But, um, obviously, our mill rate is gonna have to be adjusted, as well as the counties, I'm assuming.
I'm sure they're gonna do that.
And I'm sure the fire department is, is not gonna be taking almost nine cents out of our adjusted rate. They're gonna have to adjust their
That's gonna be a, a major
We'll give them very much of that.
Again, I, I still, I want to see their budget as it relates to our expenses.
I think we need to
And
Figure out what our costs are, set that aside, and then figure out what our millage rate's going to be, and then figure out, we're gonna put that back in to cover that.
Right.
Cause that's gonna be a, a very big sticking point.
Well, we'll have to figure out what our budget is gonna be. Well, we'll have to figure out what our budget is gonna be, once you get all the numbers, and figure out, okay, what are we gonna give the fire department, they're gonna accept it or not, once we get it all done, then we can adjust our mill rate down.
I think, yeah, I think.
To where we.
But you know, we are gonna have a budget increase, and that's what I want people to understand.
Well, it will, it's gotta go.
We're gonna have a budget increase, so there will be a tax increase.
In terms of, in terms of numbers, actual dollars.
But it's not gonna be fifty-two percent, it's going to be, it's gonna, it might be six percent, it might be whatever our budget goes up.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're not going to be raising the mill rate, we'll be dropping the mill rate to try to get that equilibrium there.
Well, to meet our budget and our reserves.
And our reserves, yeah.
And so, so that's that, so, we, we're gonna have to work on that.
Yes, we will, yes, we will.
And then we have the miscellaneous costs of, um, we had two thousand dollars.
We'll make it a thousand, we haven't spent anything.
I don't know what.
What miscellaneous is?
Well.
And then we've got, um, the maintenance.
Fire station maintenance?
Right, which.
Uh, I got it at fifteen hundred.
Do we wanna put it at two, or?
Fifteen hundred, because we haven't spent anything the last two years down there.
And then property insurance is what it is, I guess.
Is what it is.
Okay, so, we'll get those updated. Moving on to streets and roads.
Streets and roads.
Can you do your button?
Okay. Um, going down, I've not changed anything until item number, um, well, account number that ends in five sixty-four, which is paving.
Yep.
And Janet and I talked about this, and we've got expenses already that we know of, of a hundred and seventy grand for a, one road, and thirty thousand for the shoulders on the circle, so there's two hundred thousand right there, so that's gonna be that expense. Um, moving down, we have snow removal, patching and crack pouring, we're gonna leave those numbers the same, fifteen thousand each. Although, there has been no, now Janet, there's been no expenditures in those accounts, have we not done that?
Not, we didn't do it for last year, but we'll do it, we're going to do, have to do some, prior to June, or July?
No.
Part of July?
Oh, so we didn't use, we didn't use, we don't, we didn't spend any of this money this year?
No.
And you're not going to?
No, okay.
We didn't do any crack filling or any of that?
No, I told them to home off until next budget.
Okay.
Unless you want me to tell them, go ahead, but.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you go out there and you see the roads every day, you know what needs to be done.
Okay.
I asked him for something and I didn't get it, so.
So, do we leave these numbers in for next year?
Yeah, let's.
Then we have, um, traffic control signs, um, the mowing, obviously, the mowing, um, we're gonna, we've got our contracts that we're gonna have to deal with on that.
They'll reportedly go up.
It'll go up, we know.
Yeah, yeah.
Storm removal, I'm not changing any of these numbers, um, streetlights, um.
That's gonna be what that's gonna be.
Do we wanna put that at nine instead of ten?
I wouldn't, because, uh, Duke is always talking about trying to pass along more costs to us.
That's true, cause Duke does most of your power, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, the maintenance center, the collection, we talked about that, and we said it's so variable that we're gonna leave it at, at the nineteen.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's been pretty, that's worked pretty well for us this year.
Yeah, and, and you know, it depends on if we have a storm, if it gets filled up, I mean, need to have it cleaned out twice in a month, so, yeah.
Based on our, the only good thing is, is that based on our current spend rate, if we annualize it, it's, it's eleven thousand dollars that we hope to spend, so it's.
And we're at seventy-five.
Okay, right.
We're doing good.
Rating and seating, um, again, not changing any of that, one thing we do, I do have a question on, and Janet was gonna check on this, was that on the last page, it's count number five-nine-six, which is maintenance, labor and material at fifteen thousand, and then we have, um, you know, exactly what is in that number, because, or who, what, what that is.
What was it for? I can't remember.
Nine, five-nine-six, basis labor, mature, fifteen grand was in the budget, we spent twelve?
No, we spent eight, we spent eight.
I can't remember where it was for.
Eighty-one hundred, annualized twelve.
So, we're just gonna check to see what that is, and, and really, um, if we wanna keep that large of a number in that.
Is that things like, uh, picking up dead deer?
Yeah, but we didn't, yeah, but we didn't spend eight thousand dollars picking up dead deer.
No, I'm trying to remember what else we, what else we did.
A lot of deer killed, man.
No, and the storm damage, it wouldn't have been that, so I, we don't, we're gonna check to see what that is.
Yeah, we're gonna be on a report.
She caught me off guard, I don't know the answer.
Good.
And then there's a, a capital outlay, and I'm not really sure what we, what we budgeted.
Eleven thousand two for in a capital outlay versus, you know, repairs and maintenance and all of that.
And then we also had a question on the beautification versus just the landscape beds. So, there's appearance and beautification with, which we budgeted money for, and doesn't appear that we.
It's due.
But yet, we have, you know, why isn't that just in the landscaping beds?
Yeah, why don't we combine the two?
Right, right.
We can still leave it at five thousand, probably.
Right, or even.
Or six thousand.
Right, so we're, we're gonna figure out what the, yeah, what those are, and, and see which ones we wanna maintain. Then moving on to the pool. Oh, and you didn't have any changes yet on any of these numbers, right, Janet?
No, that's since we spoke.
Moving on to the pool, um, for the upcoming year, we're leaving the miscellaneous at a thousand, we'll have zero in salaries. Pool contract will be thirty thousand.
Then how much of that will already be spent this year?
And the pool contract?
Oh, you know what, that's right, we have made some payments to them this year, haven't we?
Well, we made four, there's, right now, there's forty, there's.
Forty-four thirteen ninety.
Well, we did do a two-year contract too, right?
Yes.
So, we're gonna have the same expense.
We did a three-year.
So, that's a big deal there.
It's a running expense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We made a two-year contract, so we'll just have to pick that up again, it may change a little bit.
So, do you need, do you need to know exactly what we spent right now?
Well, it looks like we spent forty-four thirteen, and I'm pretty sure that's the number.
Mm-hmm.
So, if, if we just say twenty-six, and want to change it to twenty, twenty-six thousand instead of thirty?
Hang on.
Is that for one month?
I think that gives us, I think forty.
We had to pay for, forty-four thirteen, and we paid one, two, three, we made three payments to them. So, in April, we'll have another three, I'm just rounding up, okay? And then, starting June, it'll be eighty-eight hundred, so that's for this year.
So, that's sixteen thousand roughly.
Okay, so you need the, uh, and then, then in July, then we start over, so in July, it's going to be the expenditure eighty-eight, twenty-six.
So, it's gonna be thirty for the fiscal year, right?
Yes.
So, we'll be fine.
Yeah, okay.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. So, then social security, all these others are now.
All zeroed out.
Zeroed out for the first.
Right.
Medical care, all that stuff.
Okay.
So, we're, I'm okay, though, with the numbers for this year, right?
Utilities, you okay, seven grand?
I think so.
Okay.
Um, the thing we had a question on was this two thousand dollar line item for pool operations that has not been spent, but, you know, why is that even there? I, I don't, I don't know if that's even something that is not already included somewhere else.
Can we get the chemicals covered, supplies covered?
Right, and we've got permits, and we've got utilities, utilities, we're gonna put at, um, seven instead of ninety-five hundred, cause it's just, we're not even close to spending ninety-five hundred.
Cause when they find out that we weren't paying our electric bill, and so we didn't get one.
Again, I'm reducing, um, I'm reducing the internet service, cause it's apparently only, we've only have expensed four hundred and fifty dollars, so I don't, I don't see where.
Yeah.
Where that's going.
I don't think we're planning to do anything else with it, are we?
No.
Okay.
And then supplies and landscaping, that's, and chemicals, we're gonna leave all those numbers the same. Uh, the pool repairs are gonna be, we know it's gonna be eight thousand dollars, right, for the seam that has to get repaired, Janet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's gonna be, and that's gonna be after, oh, no, that's gonna be now, it's now, it's happening now, so we're not gonna need this eight thousand dollar.
Not for next year, no.
Not for next year.
Next year, build.
But, you know what? Leave it, you don't have to make it eight, leave it five maybe?
Make it five, make it five for maintenance.
You don't know what can happen.
Okay.
No, we don't.
Well, and we can always, in an emergency, we can always transfer out of reserves, cause we have reserves, but.
So, would you rather?
I'd almost rather put it at, hmm, maybe two?
Two or three, yeah, two or three.
But, and then we can always transfer.
Take it out of the reserves, or, yeah.
Okay, I'll give you that.
If we have a major problem, you know, we have to. Okay, I'll give you that.
Because we're, we're gonna be funding reserves too, as part of this budget, or I'm gonna try, so, um, pool maintenance is at eight, it looks like that's increased, or we spent, or we will be spending more.
Yeah.
For pool maintenance.
Yeah, which is our.
Danny.
Let me back up again for a second, I'm gonna go with the chemicals.
Yes.
We're gonna, we're annualized chemicals at thirty-seven hundred bucks.
Right.
Do we have any good feel for how expensive they have gotten?
Well, I haven't spoken to Danny, but.
Six months?
I think we figured they might be going up like ten percent.
Okay, so you factored that in, at least five thousand?
You, uh, what, under pool maintenance?
No.
No, on chemicals, on chemicals.
Chemicals, yeah.
Okay.
Cause, cause annualized, it's around four thousand dollars. Okay, um, we'll set that at two, pool maintenance, um, again, we're gonna, I'm just, I just put in eight thousand for that, cause it looks like it's, that's what it's costing us. Now, do we quote that out, or is that just, we just use?
It's Danny.
We just use that person?
Yeah, yeah, they do.
Okay. All of these numbers are gonna be staying the same, um, capital outlay, and I'm assuming this is a capital outlay, um, the locks that we're putting on the doors, actually, that's happening this fiscal year, correct? That's happening before July, so this.
This year.
I would put this at zero for now, cause we don't have any capital outlay expenses that we're thinking of, correct?
So, where are we gonna put that, five thousand?
It's in your expenses, it's in your budget.
For the, for this year.
I, we'll have to pick it up in maintenance or something.
Okay, alright.
Cause there's non-capital outlay of ten thousand dollars. Do we put it there? We could. I'm not sure what the cutoff for a capitalized versus non-capitalized expense is, uh, it might be two thousand dollars, I'm not, I'm not sure, do you know? The difference between capital?
Higher than two thousand.
Is it?
I think it's, I think it's five.
Okay, so we'll just have to, we'll have to book it through a capital outlay, but we have the money in non-capital, so, the budget bottom line will be fine.
Okay.
So, I think we should leave that at, at zero for now, and again, if we've got things, we can.
Yep.
Deal with them. On to the park. The big change in the park, we have utilities, telephone, um, trail maintenance. Now, why landscaping is zero? Oh, but they have landscaping beds. Do they do no landscaping other than mowing, so mowing is under that?
Yeah, they, yeah, they, they do.
They, uh, pine straw and stuff, and.
Okay.
They trim the bushes down around the side.
Because we have nothing budgeted for landscaping, current budget is zero, so maybe.
Am I missing a page, because you're, you're in the park right now?
Okay, okay, good. And it's, the third item on was landscaping in the park, and we have zero budgeted.
He hasn't done anything in there.
We've got landscaping beds, and so for fifteen hundred dollars.
Right, I know, yeah.
Is that all charged, charged to that liner?
Perhaps. Okay.
That's probably where we're at.
And then we have, we have maintenance, general maintenance, and I think we should add an expense for trail maintenance, um, unless, I don't see where we, we're doing that right now.
I'm waiting for a proposal for a contract to maintain the trails throughout the year.
Right, and you had said that you thought it was around seven thousand dollars.
That's, well, that's what we talked about last year, so, I'm hoping he stays with that number.
How, how many, I wanna say miles, but how many, how, how many miles of trail do we have, do you know?
So, it's one and a half and a half, um.
Two and a half.
Two and a half, two and a half to three mi, okay, alright, it's two and a half. Then we have the mowing, um, it's gonna be the same, well, that'll be the contract price.
It should be higher, looking at that.
Right, but I'll, we just have to wait for the, for the quotas to go back, I think it's not, it just doesn't matter what we plug in now.
Sure, sure, let's get sure.
All the other stuff appears that it's going to be either contract or bid-driven, or probably the same. And then we had a capital outlay of twenty-five thousand, we've spent eleven, which I think was on the trails.
Yes, it was.
Okay. Now, Janet, and we've all been talking as a council as far as playground equipment, which is going to go in capital outlay, and I, and we, we both, Janet and I, proposed, um, a hundred thousand dollars for equipment, and the twenty-three thousand, I can't, I'm drawing the blank.
Was for the remainder of the, um, upgrades to the trail.
Upgrades to the trails.
Both of them.
Okay, so basically, a hundred and twenty-five thousand invested into that part.
Yes.
So, and again, the, the equipment is the biggest thing, and that equipment, we're down to two swings, I think, you know, I, no, we have four, oh, I'm sorry, four swings. We definitely need, you know, what, once you establish, that's the whole thing, is once you establish something.
You gotta maintain.
You need to, you need to keep it running, and you need to invest in it, and, and that's what, and, and the equipment that we're looking at is something that has, if I'm not mistaken, was it a hundred-year warranty on it or something?
Yes, yes.
So, at least if it goes bad in twenty-five years, there's some kind of.
Will the company still be around, we'll be ready.
Yeah.
Well, they've already been around, so.
It's hope, we, we definitely have hope.
I've notified the two companies that we got bids from, and what happened was, we contacted the companies last year, and I said, they came out, we met, and kinda talked about what we were looking at, and our space, and what we could put in that space with our budget. So, the pricing they gave us was last year's pricing, so their proposals, um, are no good at this point. So, I've contacted both companies and said, okay, me again, um, now we can start talking real numbers, they'll guarantee those numbers, uh, until July, when we could start working on it. So, I had some figures from last year, but they're no good anymore, but.
Yeah, and you were getting input from the, from the citizens that, um.
Oh, yeah, I'm asking, yeah, I talked to, Jessica and I sat down, and, she's got children, and we picked out, and even from the companies themselves, and what would be a good piece of equipment for ages five through twelve, and then five and under. So, that's what we in, put together in the space that we have, and both companies will take care of everything, the border.
Reframing it.
The ground, cover everything, um, so I'm real happy about that, uh, so we'll just have to see what they come in with, but, yeah, it wasn't my decision for these pieces of equipment, but I wanted their input.
Sure.
So, we'll just wait and see what they come up with.
Right. So, that's that. Um, last page, our debt service is zero, so we don't have to worry about any of that. In the, in the, um, reserves, what I did is I made notes of what the current reserve balances are right now. So, our capital reserves, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and if, um, we had made, we had made a resolution that each year, we would put a minimum of twenty-five thousand into capital reserves, which, um, we had in our last budget, and we, I think, since we have quite a bit of money that's not reserved in our, in our bank accounts, or not in reserve funds, it's kind of just in a general fund, I really think that we, we should put at least fifty thousand into this capital reserve fund. Set that aside, move it from our general fund into, not, this is not tax-based stuff, it's just moving it out of our general fund into that reserve fund. More, more, I mean, but for now, I think, just to keep, keep funding or saving for projects that could come up.
Yeah, it will at some point.
Right. Contingency fund, now, last year, we had, you know, five hundred dollars over our, over our tax collection, that's where our budget, that was our extra, extra money, so, um, police vehicle, I thought thirty. Police vehicle, I thought thirty, but we can change that to twenty thousand, we currently have seventy-five thousand in reserves.
Plus twenty.
So let's change it, let's change that to a twenty thousand dollar reserve added to that fund. Streets, I really believe that our street fund should be closer to a million dollars than at four hundred thousand dollars. And I would really love to see, and I'm just throwing these numbers out, but I would love to move, cause again, we're spending in one year on one street, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I think we should move four hundred thousand into reserves for streets. That's just my comment, um.
I think we're gonna start to see the wear and tear on the, particularly the east side roads.
Well, the older they.
On all the construction traffic.
Right, but from the construction traffic, they're aging, you know, and as soon as, you know, once they get to a certain, you know, it, it degrades quicker the older they are, and we don't wanna get behind on that.
Yeah.
And again, we've got plenty of money in our general fund to be able to reserve that much.
Just reserve it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we have it's close to, to, it's over two million dollars of not reserved funds. So, I, we're good. I don't know why we have transfer to capital projects versus transfer to capital reserve, so I'm just not gonna, I, I don't know what that is.
No, there's no.
It's actually, when you have a capital project that's underway, that has a separate budget to itself, so that's why the difference in that line item, line item, because you put it into there.
Thank you.
And then to that budget.
Thank you. Separation allowance, currently seventy thousand, again, we've always, it appears that we've always done fifteen, and I think we can continue to do that. If we want to put more money into that, maybe we should, cause we have more officers that, um.
Give me eighty-five thousand.
Might, might start, you know, be, being affected by that, but I just, we can if you would like to, so I'm gonna throw that out there. Now, transfer to the pool, right now the pool reserve is at sixty-five thousand, I think we should put at least twenty thousand into the pool reserve. Mainly because, again, it's an aging asset, I know we invested a lot of money in it, but it's another thing where the older it gets, it's very likely that the expenses are going to, the repairs are gonna be more expensive.
No question.
So.
And frequent.
It's, and I, instead of always having this line item of, oh, maybe we'll have a repair, maybe we have a repair, we should just do a reserve, and then keep the, keep the line item at zero.
And keep it in the reserve.
Right. And just, and just fund the, again, transfer that money from our general fund into the reserve.
Do we have anything, and maybe you covered it, and I might have missed it, for pickleball, I mean, the maintenance of the pickleball courts, is there any money set up for that?
Yeah, that's a good point.
That would be at a capital, I would think, if we had, if we had to do repairs to that, it would be a transfer from the capital, capital reserves, cause it is a capital asset, so.
Didn't know if we needed to start, start a line item for that?
I don't think so, because.
To track those expenses?
For the maintenance.
Well, if we, if we spent that money.
Then you add an item then.
Then you would put a.
Gotcha.
Expense item in there for the.
Gotcha.
Pickleball.
Okay.
So that's, that's our first, first run-through.
Where's the water?
No, water.
Water's next.
Water's next.
Water's next. It's not even six o'clock yet, we're doing really well. Oh, do we want to, I guess, I guess what I'd like to say is, is that, just so we know, currently our, between our administrative salary and our, our police department salary, we're looking at, currently, we're looking at almost three hundred and seventy thousand dollars of our tax dollars, going just for salary, but when you look at the yearly, including benefits, um, well, this is with the increases, I have to tell you. But, um, basically, we're looking at almost a million dollars with benefits.
For the five, six, seven, eight people.
And, but again, when you think about it, it's only, you know, it's three hundred thousand dollars with, um, you know what, that doesn't look right.
Well, you got.
Actually, yeah, it's not right.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Yeah, she, she added, she added two, she added both salaries together on this, but she, never mind, well, anyway, currently.
Not that much, no.
No, it is, because she added, she added, she added it all the way across, she didn't take off the first salary. So it's basically, probably around six hundred thousand.
You're taking about.
Cause you have to subtract the three ninety-two, you have to take four hundred thousand dollars off of here.
Off of that, yeah.
So around five hundred thousand with benefits, is five hundred thousand dollars, um, for our, which is a big chunk of our tax dollars. And if we were, you know, again, we have a four percent increase, which would take our gross salary up to three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, a five percent increase would be three hundred and ninety-two thousand, as far as grow, just gross salary.
Personally, I don't think we're gonna get by with a five percent increase for the police department.
I'm just saying, and.
Just a number, yeah.
I know, it's just a number.
We've gotta, and we've gotta, we've gotta figure out, number one, it's, and it's not just the police department, it's, it's all.
Oh, I, I understand.
It's a.
I'm just, I, I talked to the chief yesterday with his two officers, they were talking, started talking about salaries. VAST is gonna give their police officers a ten thousand dollar increase, not a percentage, but a ten thousand dollars, and their base salary is pretty close to what we are now, but they're gonna give them ten thousand apiece. Pinehurst is short eight officers, and they're out there beating the bushes with big money to get people to come in. You know, they're gonna be out here rattling our cage to get our guys over there.
Oh, definitely, it's, we are in a, a, um, a very tough, very tough position.
I don't think we have to match, but I think we gotta go more than five.
I'm, I'm just saying, well, you know what, and that's where the big tax increase comes from.
Well, of course it is, yeah.
Because, like I said, based on our last year's budget, we only had five hundred dollars left over from collective taxes.
I understand that.
That's not, you know, that's with very minimal reserves, it was, you know, not, it was, so, it's something that we, I know we're struggling with, and I'm almost wondering if we need to almost do a employee compensation reserve, and take money, you know, out of our general fund, and put it into an employee compensation reserve, so that we're not, you know, hitting our bottom line dollars, you know, budget every year. I, I don't know the right answer to this, but to sit there and, and say that, again, and we can't deplete all of our general fund money just to, um, and, and not have the tax dollars replenishing, um.
Well, we're in a tight situation with inflation, and nobody's, nobody wants to be police officer anymore, they're just.
We're lucky.
Raise, 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 raise.
We are incredibly blessed and lucky to have the, all of the employees.
With the ones, the employees that we got now, they're excellent, and we certainly try to, try to keep them.
And I really do believe, and this might be a little bit premature on the conversation, but I really do believe we need to also fund an additional full-time person in the office, which would be an entry level.
We need to look at a, a fund for that.
Um, multi-talented person, um, could be someone with some bookkeeping experience, could be some, somebody with some, you know, computer experience, because we have limited backup for, um, we have no backup.
We have zero backup.
Well, I, I know, so I wanted to be, I wanted to be kind, but between, you know, um, all the zoning, all the, 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 um, city clerk issues, whether it's a deputy type, or like I said, an entry level position, again, kind of like with Jesse, where if we find the right person, there's training that can be provided, there's, there's growth opportunities in the job. So, anyway, um, but someone with some kind of minimal office experience, bookkeeping experience, um, wanting to learn, um, new.
Well, Sharon, Sharon is getting close to retirement, isn't she?
I believe that's, that could be within a couple of years, which is not very long.
Not very long, when you're looking at planning.
Take two years to train somebody.
And, and when you look at the, the, the knowledge that needs to be transferred in either position, it's something that we really need to look at, I mean, you would never run a business without, without a backup of some sort. And I think we really need to, again, add that to the budget as well, so.
I agree.
I agree.
Let's figure out how we place that, where we place it, which is gonna be an issue, but I think the, the idea of planning for that is important.
Right.
I think the, you know, the other option is that you start looking at a, a village manager.
Town administrator.
Yeah, but that's crazy, cause we have nine employees.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense to do that.
Well, I'm just looking, if you're looking at somebody that can do overarching, and have the abilities to do things, that's another option we should.
Can I, can I just say something?
Which is gonna pay off worse.
What, can I, can I ask you, what do you think a village manager's responsibilities would be, in Foxfire?
A lot of them, a lot of it would come directly from what Sharon and Lisa are doing. Perhaps it's the, some of the administrative things, getting all of the myriad of pieces of paperwork to go out.
Buying grants.
Fun, yes, I mean, there are a lot of things that they could do. I don't think we're there yet, I don't think we're there yet.
And I don't know if I would turn that as a village manager.
Yeah.
And I'll, and I'll explain why, cause I did a little research regarding Pinehurst Village Manager, okay? Now, if you look at the population of Pinehurst, they have, this is twenty-twenty-one census, they have eighteen thousand residents. We have approximately fifteen hundred.
Correct.
Their village manager is in charge of seventeen departments. The village manager also has two assistant village managers. The village manager's background in Pinehurst, where he came from, and God bless him, is the military. He, it came from a, he was a Fort Bragg Garrison Commander. His annual salary, this was back when he was hired, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And a vill, an average salary for a village similar in size to Pinehurst is between eighty-nine-five and a hundred and twenty-eight. So, and they also have a current number of employees in, in Pinehurst, seven hundred and two, we have eight. I, I'm sorry, I cannot justify an expense for a village manager for eight employees.
I'm not saying we need to do that, I think we need to think about that, because eventually things, whether you have, whether you have a thousand people, or ten thousand people, there are certain things that still have to be done, no matter what, no matter how many, so. Are we ready for a village manager? No.
No.
But we should be thinking about it, and, you know, get our brains open up a little bit, because you're right, we have no backup.
Yeah, but backup doesn't mean, doesn't, to me, backup is someone who, again, I think, we don't need a manager, I really don't, cause if we do, and if you do have a manager, you're still gonna need that clerical person, cause a manager is.
You would, absolutely.
So that means you need now two people, and now you're, our budget, our taxes just, and again, we're a village of fifth, there are HOAs that are larger than our village.
Oh, absolutely.
So, we need to be a little bit smarter, we have fifteen hundred people, we have a tax base of, um, um, less than a million dollars.
We, we need support staff, we don't need managers.
And, and I, and, you know, and I do believe that, I do believe that our current office staff is professional enough where they don't need to have a manager over them.
And, and I'm not saying that we should do that, I think those are two options that we should, two, two paths to look at. Option A, option B, and let's go, you know, if we feel that getting a, a third party in there, you know, to do, how do you break out the duties, where do you put this person, how do you, how do you man, give them the tools they need to do their job? That's just, that is of some consequence, doing that, so.
Well, I think, I think, I think a council member personally, I mean, I wouldn't mind, you know, if I, if they needed a manager to get it started, it's kind of like with, when Jesse started, um, Gary, Gary really started with him, and kinda showed him the ropes, and, and gave him a few, and then they just assimilate into their job, and that's the normal, you know, of the, you know, professional people, they don't need to be managed, and most people do better without being micromanaged, um, but I think it's the same thing where a council member, is it me, probably, I, I don't have a problem doing that, you know, getting them trained in, you know, bookkeeping, or cutting checks, or doing something like that, um, and, and doing payables, doing, doing the receivables, it's all, it's very, it's just, it, it's an office job, and I think that, um, yes, it's a municipality, so it's different than a business, I understand that, but, same thing with some of the stuff that Lisa does, you know, the, the, even correspondence, you know, she's got a lot of canned letters that she uses, and that someone can take care of that, you know, and the filing, and the, and the, all of that. But to, I think it would be good for at least one person to start, and as we grow, maybe we need another person, but, um.
That's fine, I mean, that's, that's fine, I, I think we should look at that for the next year.
I think you definitely need to budget.
At least think about how we would do that. And I don't know whether that's something that we can do fiscal year, I mean, coming fiscal year, or the year after that, I don't know.
I think if we wait another year, it's gonna be, it's going to be too short of a time.
Yes.
I think we're, I think we're, we're, um, we're lucky right now, and we shouldn't be running our town on luck when it comes to, you know, anything that could happen.
And I think there's a, there are a lot of issues that are changing over time, and I think one of the great things that came about over the last couple of years, is all of you guys coming on board to be on the council. Because for a while, we weren't sure anybody was gonna run. And when you get down to that sort of situation, then, how does the village manage itself? So. Just my thoughts, okay. Alright, what else you got? You ready for water?
Yes, underwater.
You're on.
Water, I know what we're doing.
You're on.
I know. I got on a rant there, sorry. Okay, so, um, again, I'm taking shots at these numbers, Gary, so, you know, just, I didn't change anything, um, until, obviously salaries are gonna go up. All the, the first page, I changed nothing.
Yeah.
Thinking that they were gonna stay the same, and if they go up, you know, if you get information, Gary, we'll change it as we go.
I agree.
Second page, I changed nothing, but we will have to put auto insurance in here, if it's not already in here. Although there is a vehicle maintenance, I don't see.
Yeah, okay, you got Gary's.
I don't see insurance though, yet.
I'd be happy to go through this.
You sure?
Sure, okay, great. Uh, computer services, that can go up to three hundred, we had that high number because we knew that we were gonna get, uh, him up and running, so we already got him up and running, three hundred dollars. Gas now, no change, tires no change yet. So pain, seven hundred dollars, again, we're under a contract, and, uh, we were right at, uh, forty percent in one tank, and I think sixty in the other. We have two generators, so seven hundred dollars is what we were budgeting.
Budgeting.
Oh, they have tires on that, how are you gonna? I think they're new, didn't they just put tires on that?
Yeah, and I've got a fund for maintenance, uh, to take care of this kind of expenses.
Okay. In case he has a blowout.
Yeah, I didn't see any reason to budget for tires, I think we have a maintenance fund, or I have a maintenance fund that's in the year that we can.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No problem. Uh, chemicals, and I'm waiting for, there's about seven items here that I'm, line items, and I'm waiting for David to come back at me, but four thousand dollars probably, but again, that could go, be adjusted back to three, I'm waiting for his response on that.
Well, we could just put four in there.
Four in there.
That's fine.
But chemicals?
Yeah.
Office supplies, um, again.
That's probably a computer, right?
I, yes, I, well, I think so, to be honest with you.
I'm sure it was.
And, uh, so we didn't have anything, any need there, small tools, add five hundred dollars.
Well, office supplies, we probably should be.
Oh, I had two hundred.
Two hundred, yeah, you had a portion, and you have to have a portion.
Thank you, I had two hundred, sorry.
Okay.
Uh, shipping freight, zero, small tools, five hundred, but again, I'm waiting for, uh, Jesse back on that. Shipping freight, zero. Small tools, five hundred, but again, I'm waiting for Jesse back on that. But I'm just throw five hundred out there for now. No change on the membership dues. Travel, no change, one thousand. Certification, no change. The telephone, we haven't gotten our bill yet, so Jesse went under the police plan.
Yeah.
But I don't know what our
That's generally, I think, forty-two a month.
Okay, I had five hundred bucks is what I threw in there.
I think that's
It's pretty close.
It is pretty close.
Close.
Okay.
Yeah, let's go with five hundred.
I talked with Sharon on the postage, she said five thousand.
Is it going up again?
Oh, yeah, they already did.
Okay, so utilities, I added a two thousand dollars for that, assuming we're gonna get a new well in. So our utilities are gonna go up on that. No change on printing, no office furniture. New water meters, we're budgeting for fifteen, but again, I'm waiting for, we're at fourteen now. We're, we're budgeting fifteen. Water tower maintenance is twenty-eight thousand, so that's a good one. That's a ten-year contract. Next page, vehicle maintenance, so here's where I put two thousand dollars in to take care of that kind of stuff.
That's great.
Tires or whatever.
Yep.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Yep.
This maintenance and repair, this, this is actually for our well houses. Routine, and emergency repairs and so forth. I put twenty-five thousand in there just because the fences are going up.
I guess twenty-five as well.
Oh, good. Great minds. The internet service, I need to find out exactly what the heck that is. I believe it has to do with money that we spend through Badger for our connection for, between Badger and the, and the meters.
Well, there's a Beacon service agreement too, and I don't know if that's
I think that's for this area. I don't know that, I, I'm, I'm waiting, I'm gonna wait to hear back on that. So if we can hold that one open, try to get some more information.
And to get the computer contract too, I have a star next to that, that we've gotta figure out. Because, you know, everyone's got two grands in every single expense line for computers, you know, for computer contracts. I've gotta get to the bottom of what's going on there.
Okay. And per contract with Beacon, training expenses, I left a thousand.
Beacon, Beacon service agreement. I, do we need to increase that? Because is that gonna go up because we have more, more, more meters?
More meters. I don't know, again, this is, this is what I'm waiting for Sharon or whoever's
Okay, well, it is per contract, but we need to, I just threw five thousand in there because we've already, to date, it's three thousand.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that was just a one-time fee or if it's a monthly fee. I'm not sure how that works. Okay, so we'll get a question mark on that. Okay?
I didn't change anything. We can get rid of the uniform upkeep line item. The cathodic, I don't even know if I'm spelling that right, or pronouncing it.
I think you did.
Inspection, I have no idea. David is gonna respond back and see what that is, so I can
It's better than money.
Some of these, even if they're zero, they still show up, so we've got a lot of line items like that.
Okay. The insurance, again, I didn't put anything for that because it was per contract. Boring, again, this is one that I, we're working on the expense for boring. It's, it's come up quite a bit. We're originally getting a nineteen hundred, originally, three years ago, nineteen hundred dollars for boring. It has gone up, but again, I'm waiting on details from Bruce McFadden.
That's supposed to be charged on the water main, then the people who are, when they're getting their water meters tapped, if there's boring involved, that's supposed to be part of the tap fee.
Part of your tapping.
Yeah, but I think this, this, this particular item, I believe, is when our water may, or when our water needs to go across
That's what they have to pay for. They have to pay for that.
I think that, and again, I, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna reserve, it's zero now, I'm cool to keep it at zero. But I just have a note out to David to find out what, why did we have this here as expected. It's zero, I agree. It just caught my eye.
And again, this should be part of the tap fee on the, on each person. When, when they, when they fill out.
Exactly.
That's why I wanted to have them go to inspect the site to see if boring was needed.
Yes, agreed.
And that was part of the tap fee. It should be
Agreed. And that's, yeah, so why is there a line item?
I don't know why it's a line item.
So I just add the question out. No change, all the way down, second, next page.
Why do we have all this on this?
Yeah, so the way that, the way that this works, if you look at Woodland Circle Well Number Eleven, this is the solution that Sharon came up with to keep all, all of the money for any repairs that would be needed across our wells, to a one fund.
Oh, oh, I see, but, but she delineated which one was which.
Did not.
Oh, she did. But the expenses go, you can see how the expenses are broken down by well. As what we've spent so far, but the budget is just, we throw it into one well.
Gotcha, okay.
So for, so far, we've spent like six thousand dollars, a little over six thousand on different wells.
Oh, okay, total for all wells, I see, okay.
So based on my presentation that I gave, that you saw, where we have some significant maintenance that needs to be done, that Woodland Circle Well Number Eleven, I'm asking to go from ten to twenty-six.
Well, wait a minute, can I, I, I kinda was thinking that the maintenance and repairs, where you had twenty-five thousand?
Uh, we're gonna
It's, it's back a page, it's on, it's the second line item, brief, how brief is the item?
There it is.
That I thought the well repair was like if you needed, if you needed like, like the pumps and the, like if you, if you blew up, if a pump blew up or got, you know, that the, that the well houses and all that repairs that you're doing are in the well houses?
Yes.
That, that was the twenty, that's where the twenty-five grand was going.
Correct. And that's, and that, again, that is the refurbishing, we still need to
But the, but the well, but the wells, this ten thousand, that's like if they need to replace a pump?
Correct.
If they need to
Well, I can put it wherever we want to, Janice, whatever you think. And again, this is based on, again, that presentation that I did for well four and seven, where those main lines and all of the couplers are gonna need to be replaced.
Right, and that's capital, that's really capital, we really should, that's a capital improvement. But if you've got a, I think if you put like a new, if you need to replace the pump in, in a well, I don't think that's considered, I'm not sure if that's considered a capital improvement.
I would think so.
I think that's a little different than, than the well house, you know.
That's fine, I'll put it wherever it needs to go. I just need to make sure that we have it available in, in the right bucket to be able to pull from when we need to do that.
Right. And again, that's what the reserves are for too, if we have some kind of extraordinary damage because of something.
True.
Or if, if, you know, three of our wells go down because the pumps went bad.
Correct.
It's gonna take more than ten thousand dollars.
Correct, but we do know what we have to do.
And that's what I thought, that's what I thought the, the maintenance and repair was for. The twenty, the twenty-five thousand was for all those panel replacements, pipe replacements?
Well, we, we, and again, we can, I can put that, that sixteen thousand into that as, wherever we wanna put it. I just need additional money to take care of those pipes. The, the, the infrastructure of four and seven, the ones I did the presentation on.
Yeah. Okay, what's the twenty-five thousand for?
Which one are we on?
The maintenance and repair.
So that, and again, I, the way that I broke that out is building maintenance, routine maintenance. That's what I, that's what we, that's what I had there for my notes. This is, this is according to, to Sharon, this is the, this is the dollar amount she pulls from to pay Bruce for all the work in support of the, the well houses and, and any infrastructure. So if he has to, if he has to go in, we have a leak somewhere along our main, or if one of the, the
Okay.
If, if there's a
Meter's gonna be bad.
Yeah, meter goes bad and it's on our side, that's where, that's where she pulls this money from. But it's, it's not, but it's definitely not.
For the well houses.
Unless we want to.
It's not for the well houses.
No, ma'am.
So how much do you want in the well houses?
That was twenty-six.
Twenty-six, so you're saying, okay, for twenty-six, so that's all the well house?
Correct.
Great, okay. And the other one is more for infrastructure, maintenance and repair?
Correct.
Versus well house maintenance and repair? Inside and out?
Yes, although she, although, yes. But again, just to be clear, the, the funds that have been used so far for the work that Jesse's been doing as it relates to the houses and so forth, is coming out of that maintenance and repair.
Fifteen thousand.
So that's the building maintenance, routine maintenance, and then emergency maintenance within the infrastructure.
Maybe what we should be doing is, we should be, when we're repairing well house number eight or whatever, like you've got pipes to replace in some well house, that expense should go onto the well that's being, the well number that's being repaired or maintained.
That way you can track it.
Yeah, and that's what Sharon, I gotta talk to Sharon.
Yeah, yeah, talk with Sharon about that. I'll put it wherever you want. I had originally eight thousand dollars for each. But she's the one who recommended that it goes in because that's how she's a
I've got no, I've got no problem, I've got no problem putting it all under well number eleven in one line item, but the expenditures, like when Jesse's, like when Jesse is painting a well house or if he's replacing woodwork, it should go against the well number that he's doing it on.
Okay.
That's what, and I'll have to talk to Sharon.
That way you can track it, another way, we don't have no idea what's going on.
Right, and if we see that some pipe is rusting every two years on well house number ten, we've got, something's, something's going wrong, you know.
That's fine, I'm, I'm okay.
Okay. So, maintenance and repair is basically for infrastructure and Bruce McFadden doing something on maintenance and repair on our water lines or not on well houses?
Correct, routine and ma, and, and emergency.
Okay.
That's twenty-five thousand, right?
That's twen, that's, yes, twenty-five. And then, what we're gonna put in well house number eleven as far as the budget line item is to twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand to fix that.
And that's where all the inside and outside maintenance is going to be charged to, according to the well house it's done on.
So, that sounds fine to me.
And are you also, the security upgrades that you are planning, is that also in that twenty-six thousand number?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes, as a matter of fact, yes. So new well testing, I put seven because we are gonna do, we know we're gonna do the testing. Well, hopefully you're getting permission to do the testing on the, that piece of land next to the condos over there.
Did, did we actually find the owner on that and talk to him? Has that gone on?
Well, Don's working on it.
Okay.
We had seven thousand, or I'm sorry, I, I think we're gonna use seven thousand.
Well, we spent seven.
We spent seven on the last one, so I just figured seven for this new one.
Okay.
And then, of course, we have not used a hundred and seventy-five thousand for new well yet, so I just left that alone.
Can I ask a question? Because I missed the last meeting. Are we still looking to purchase those acres, that well site that you were
No, the one down there.
Vehicle purchase.
Yeah, no, it's gone, it's totally
Vehicle purchase, I mean.
There, no water.
Police department's charging ten thousand for that.
Even though the map says thirty-seven gallons, no water. Okay, let's finish.
We're convincing over here, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So I was asking about
Did you say you were giving it to?
Yes.
Testing, I just put to seven thousand dollars. I'm waiting for David on that one. He's really the one that does all that testing. So that, that could move. Non-capital assets, again, I'm
Wait a minute, there's, there's new well testing, which is seven. There's new well construction, which we're gonna leave because we don't know when we're gonna construct a well.
Correct.
We've got the next line item of testing, that's general water testing, right?
Correct.
And what did you have for that one?
I put it at seven, but I'm waiting for David. Because we've only spent thirty-four hundred dollars.
Right, I had, I put five down, but you think, you had seven?
I, you know, I would just work on the assumption everything's gonna be more expensive. But, but based on what I'm seeing here, yeah, five thousand dollars doesn't sound unreasonable to me. But I was waiting till David got back with me.
I'll put a question mark next to that.
Or you just put it five, I can deal with that.
I'll put a question mark next to it.
I had to step out here for a second, but new well construction, hundred and seventy-five thousand, does that include the construction of the, the, the well house and the fence around it? And whatever else we wanted to do security-wise?
And again,
We don't know, I don't think we know enough about
I'm gonna defer to whoever put that number in there to begin with.
Yeah, because I don't think, and again, whatever that is, we've got enough money set aside to move stuff around. But I, I kinda thought, I don't know what it cost the last time we put a well in. But
Long term.
Yeah, so I think we're taking a shot in the dark on that, and if we have to do a budget amendment,
We'll do it.
We'll do it.
I'm hoping we're gonna know soon with the second property. So I, I didn't make any changes there?
Now, does the well, will the well driller, if, when, when we do test for, we get our, we get our report back on that, I'm assuming we go out for quote to have the drought, the drilling of the well, so that we know what it's gonna cost us? But we don't just give them a blank check, do we?
Well, under, under what has done the drilling for us previously.
Okay.
They're the ones that are, the driller of the record.
Give us a ballpark of what a typical well would cost?
Well, they give you a price per foot plus the pumps, plus that, plus, plus. So they, they should be able to give you a real close estimate, it all depends on how deep they have to go.
Okay, so price per foot, right.
Plus the pumps, plus the piping.
Can we get some kind of number from them?
We can't even get them out here, but I'll certainly do my best.
Beat up fire. Back to this again, hundred and seventy-five thousand. Where are we going to carry the cost of buying the property?
That's, that's gonna have to come from the general fund.
So that's gonna have to come out of the ARF funds?
Well, just so you know, the general fund in the water department
It's got a lot of money in there.
Where'd my piece of paper go? Not reserved in the water department is nine hundred thousand.
A million bucks.
But that doesn't mean that we can use all of that, obviously, because we still have to have, you know, our fund balance and all that, but
Do we wanna stick something in the, in here line item that we can go against for the property or just, you just wanna keep it?
Well, we might be
In the general fund, I mean, I don't know.
Right now, I think we should just, I think we should wait because we might be buying that this year. We, we don't
We could be.
And if that happens, it's a budget amendment anyway.
Anyway. Okay.
And we do have the ARP funds that are still, they're, they're in a separate reserve, that's not even, and we can move that.
That was what, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, something like that?
One thirty-three.
Well, right now, plus we're getting another one, six years old.
It was fifty percent.
Did they move it down? Yeah.
It's fifty percent. Okay.
About to re-sign all the right documents again, the third time.
Yeah. Okay, so the testing, I have a question mark. The rest of it, I have zeros on, oh. Yeah, I've got zeros on the rest of this.
So, yeah, that, that works for me.
Oh, Gary, there's a line item, eighty-eight, nine, down towards the bottom of the sheet.
Zero dollars for vehicle purchase.
Vehicle purchase, by the way, you owe us some money.
Literal truth.
You and Janice over there, giving it to me.
I already told, I already told them when I thought of that.
Thanks, Janice. I support whatever you said.
I said no.
I think
I said no. We'll have to deal, we'll have to figure out a better price than that.
So I, so I owe you some numbers when I get, I'm meeting with David and Jesse May twelfth to hopefully harangue or get these numbers together. The ones that were the questions.
May, you mean June?
Ah, sorry.
I mean, April.
April, sorry.
Can we, okay, because we probably won't be talking budget at the council meeting, right? Because it's gonna be long.
We need to set up a date.
We could do a special meeting. Can, can you do it before April? Well, actually, that's just two weeks. So why don't we set, set up a special meeting after our council meeting, if we can?
Well, we also need to have, we also wanna have a citizens' participation meeting.
Oh, this is just to get our first numbers?
Right, right, but I mean, just, don't think about just that one, we have to have at least one.
Right, but if he can, if we can firm up these numbers in between our work session and our, our council meeting and our work session, I think we go.
Let's do it, then we can get some base.
And then we can at least have our, we can have a citizens' participation in, in our We should have it, and then we can at least have our, we can have a citizens' participation in, in our, uh, work session or in our first...
If we, if we can figure it out on a special meeting, have it ready and...
And I can plug, we can firm up his numbers, if we can get those numbers firmed up.
Yep.
Oh...
So I'll get with, with Lisa, say what kinda dates we wanna set for a special meeting for the budget. Um, finalize the budget.
Debt service, we do have that last payment of debt service, so, that's, that's still there.
Twenty-six grand?
Yeah, 'cause it happens in August, so it's always, always shows on the next, right, but it's gonna be done in August. Um, last page. What I'd like to do is, our elevate, right now, our, I couldn't fit this, but our current water reserves, okay, we have a hundred thousand dollars in wells. Future wells is a hundred and thirty-six thousand. Tank maintenance is seventy-five thousand, and infrastructure is fifty thousand, okay? I, do we feel, I'm just wondering, do we all feel that seventy-five thousand is enough to keep in the tank, in the tank maintenance?
That's based on our, uh...
We have, we have a tank.
No, I know, but if something above and beyond the contract goes wrong...
Twenty, twenty-eight thousand, your house already being maintained.
No, and that's just part of our budget, that's, this is above and beyond.
Yeah, I understand, I don't think we need more than seventy-five thousand.
Okay, then I'll cross, I thought maybe we might wanna put more in there, but if we don't, that's, we can move it from, fine.
Yeah.
Um, I think we should, I'm thinking we should put two hundred thousand in reserves for our infrastructure. That might be a little high, 'cause we have, we have fifty thousand in there now, but if we had like a, a water main break, or something serious happen, and our, our, our system is around fifty years old, and I know, oh, it's gonna last a hundred years, but I don't think we should, I think fifty thousand...
Hundred, huh?
Go to a hundred right now?
Go to another fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Get a hundred thousand.
We can move fifty thousand from the general fund into the infrastructure fund. And then, and I was thinking of a hundred thousand into future wells, and I don't know if we wanna do that. I, I think we should.
Got a hundred thirty-six in there now.
Right, right. There's also a reserve, there's a well reserve and there's a future wells reserve. I mean, I'm not sure, um, Sharon, Sharon thought that, that one hundred and thirty-six was left over from some, some loan or something that we, some money that we got that we had to do reserves for or something. She couldn't remember what the, why we have two different well reserves. She was gonna ask our auditor, um, but...
Where are the well reserves? Where, I don't see them.
On the left page, this much.
Oh, I see them written, I see them written down, but there's, so these are new?
No, this is what, every, every month when I go, when I give you this number, that's just the number, that's just the last number.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
And there's those two, there's future wells and there's wells reserve and...
We got a hundred, two hundred thirty-six thousand or not.
Total, and maybe that's enough, maybe we don't need to reserve anymore, or do we wanna put fifty in there? Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think we're gonna have, we're absolutely gonna have a good number to work from this year.
Sixty, seven thousand, or you have three hundred thousand.
Hold on, what, what? I'm sorry, what?
Well, I, I'm feeling very confident that, for one of these, we're gonna put in a well this year, I feel very confident.
You mean next year?
Yes, sorry, sorry.
Next fiscal year, this year.
Yes, next fiscal year, so we'll have a good baseline to work from, once we know what that figure's gonna be.
All right, so we won't do anything yet?
I would... Janice?
So, quick question. You're saying that, now, how many water mains do we have? Do we know?
I do not know, I'd have to, I'd have to research it.
Just, and, and, well, I'm, I'm a cer, well, the water goes down every street.
At least thirteen miles.
We've got quite a few.
Yeah, let's get going to every street.
All right, and, and you're saying they're about fifty years old?
Well, the oldest ones are...
Well, the older ones.
And some may have been changed, or, yeah.
I don't know how many have been changed.
And the reason I'm asking this question, so, when I was in charge of the water, the wells up in Antioch, our water main was, which was a block long, was over fifty years old, and it had to be totally replaced, and this was probably about fifteen years ago. That was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar, and that was fifteen years ago. And after fifty years, the water main, which starts about this big, had about that much room in it.
Yeah.
So, you've got to assume, I hate to say it, but after fifty years, these water mains are going to be needing to be replaced, somewhere along the line. And it could be sooner, and what happened is we started getting major leaks, and, you know, doing minor repairs, and then you get another leak right down the line. And we finally said, look, forget it, we're just gonna replace it. It's more economical, so, think about, you know, you're at fifty-year-plus water mains.
If we, if we add another fifty thousand, and we can continue to do that...
Well, let's see where we, again, I think it's always good to say we're gonna trans, and again, this isn't money that's coming straight out of the budget, we're, we're moving it from the general fund into these reserve funds, just to kinda keep it segregated, so we have it just in case.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna block off everything, we wanna have some general fund money out there, we can do where we need to go.
Right.
Well, my suggestion, why don't you put, uh, three hundred thousand in your total? Combine those to one thirty-six and a hundred, and then make it, make it a hundred total.
Yeah, and I don't, I, I don't understand, again, and I don't know if there's, I gotta talk to either the auditor or, um, we've gotta get some history on why we have two, um, 'cause there's no reason that I know of to have two, unless like, um, uh, Leslie was saying, if you're in the process of, of actually creating a well, you have to put it into a separate reserve fund and work off that project fund.
Maybe we need to... Maybe that's where that one thirty-six comes from?
Maybe, I don't know, I, I don't know.
Maybe was that one, that's, A R P money, was that the way, maybe that's the A R P money?
Uh, no, because that's, that's...
That's still not there.
No, well, we are, A R P money is, the one sixty-six, that's, that's in the general fund right now, it's an A R P fund reserve of one sixty-six, so that's separate. So maybe that was a, um, maybe you thought you were gonna do a well and it didn't do a well, I don't know, don't know. But anyway, we'll figure that out. Right. So, if they, if they are combined, like you said, it's, it's one, it's basically one forty, we could put sixty, like, make it three hundred. Okay.
Where we, where we make, put the three hundred?
Um, I'm gonna, we wanna transfer from our general fund, um, thirty thousand, no, I'm sorry, sixty thousand.
To where?
Hold on, I'm writing, I can't, to the wells, the wells reserve.
Sixty, sixty thousand to the wells.
Right, and that would give us basically three hundred thousand in our wells reserves, between the two of them.
Yeah, yeah, between the two of them.
And infrastructure?
Infrastructure, we'll go to a hundred.
We'll put fifty for now.
Another hu, another fifty.
Right, so we would be at a hundred.
Yeah.
And I, I, it's kind of like the roads, I really think we do need more money in there, because that's the kinda stuff that's expensive, when you're talking about hyping and digging and it's...
Placing.
It's expensive, especially, you know, water systems, 'cause I'm sure all the rules have changed.
Oh, true.
So, we will plug these numbers in.
And I'll get, I'll have Lisa send out an email, when we're gonna be able to have a special meeting. Have to look at everybody's calendar to make sure you're all around.
Well, I like the idea of doing the special meeting in conjunction with our regular meeting, isn't that what Janice was saying?
No, I was saying after, after, between, like, like the next week, 'cause you're not meeting with your people until after our council meeting.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And I'm not gonna be here the first half of, um, the week of the seventeen. I'm gone, so it's gotta be the end of that week.
End of the week of the seventeen?
Yeah, in April, yes. So probably the nineteenth or twentieth.
Shoot the dates out so I can validate my calendar.
Yeah.
'Cause I don't have my calendar with me.
Yeah, I wanna see, when are you gonna be gone? Seventeen?
I'm sure he hasn't got it.
Good, I'm not...
Nineteenth or twentieth sometime.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's not a good week to be here. The same week, she's gone.
The whole week you're gone?
Um, to, starting the twentieth.
Starting the twentieth, all right.
Yeah, which is Thursday.
So the nineteenth looks like it might work.
Uh, the nineteenth, I'm not here.
You're not here.
She said the week of the seventeen. Right, I'm not here till Thursday or Friday, and I'm gone. Uh, how about the fourteenth? April fourteenth?
I don't have my calendar, so...
It's the Friday, I'm good.
I can't see.
It's the Friday after our council meeting. Our council meeting is the eleventh on Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
The fourteenth would work for me.
Me too.
Fourteenth, we'll tend to at least set that up. If it doesn't work for you, I'll look, 'cause I don't have my calendar with me.
April fourteenth.
Don't forget tax days coming up, Ben. I could do the twenty-fifth, which is a couple days before our work session.
I have to look and see whether I do it. Okay, do we have any more questions on our first go-through on this?
Nope.
Okay. Anybody have anything else they wanna bring up?
Nope.
We have, uh, any comments from the audience, please?
I did wait.
Come on up.
You're gone.
It's been nice to have comments before the budget.
But it's regarding everything we've talked about.
Kelly Schlenker, I live over on Sunset Lane.
Okay.
Um, the pool, when you're talking the six hours, Barb's not here to bring it up, but you did have lane swimming and synchronized swimming.
Right.
It was in addition to.
Well, and I, and I, who was it, was it you I was supposed to get back to? No, it was, um, it was Barb.
No, I'm just saying it, 'cause Barb usually brings it up.
Yeah, um, it's probably, we open, and, and again, this is still in discussion phase. I mean, if we open at eleven, they, um, they can have their synchronized swimming or, uh, yoga aerobics, uh, but it's gonna be in conjunction with the pool being open. Uh, if they wanted to open an hour early, we can open it out early, but they'll have to pay for the additional fee, for the, to pay for the two people to be there. Um, we're not gonna pass that on to the village, at least that's where I'm thinking right now. Um...
What did they do last year? I mean, was there somebody on duty when they did that?
Yeah, but see, we were in control of the pool last year, we are not in control of the pool this year.
So there were some times when six hours was eight hours?
No, seven hours.
Seven hours.
Correct, but...
So there were some days during...
Just a one, one or two...
I think it was Tuesday, Thursday.
Tuesday, Thursday, but see, when we discussed with you, it was a pool management, we told them we were open six hours a day. So that was not in the contract.
There were about anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five women would...
So...
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's pretty good turnout.
That's a good turnout.
And, and again, we, we can do it, but I don't think the village is gonna wanna pay.
Forget that many participants.
You know, you collect a couple bucks, it's thirty dollars a person, two people for an hour, sixty dollars.
I hear what you're saying, I'm just, I'm bringing it up because I...
And I had that backdoor, because we, we were still talking about it, but last year we could do it, because we were in charge of the staff, we were in charge of the pool.
And that would be in addition to having a buy pass, you would have to, your suggestion.
That's our initial fund.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions in the audience? Any questions from the rest of the council?
No.
We have a...
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?